Birmingham, I want to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council, August 3, 2021. We're going to have our invocation by Counselor Woods and our pledge of allegiance by Counselor Valerie Abbott. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning, good morning. Everybody please stand and bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity once again to come here and serve, Lord. We just thank you for the blessing of waking up once again. We ask that you keep us covered, Lord, keep us safe, keep us healthy, Lord, as we continue to work through a pandemic, Lord. Watch over everyone in the heat and just bless our decision making today as we once again try to make the best possible decisions we can for the city of Birmingham, Lord. We just ask that you would give everyone the wisdom to make the decisions that they need to make for themselves and their family so that we can end this pandemic, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Good morning, Madam Clerk, how are you doing this morning?
Good morning, I'm well. Counselor Abbott.
President.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
President.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
President.
Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor Member Woods.
President.
Counsel-- I'm sorry. Did I say Counselor Member Williams?
Yeah, down here.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Counsel-- President Protem Alexander. And Counsel President Parker.
Yes ma'am, here. Good morning. The minutes are not ready, May 4 through July 27, 2021. Good morning, Chief, how are you doing?
Morning, Mr. President, members of the council, members of the public. There's no mayor's report this morning.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, you have some boards?
Yes, sir. Announcement of board and agencies' expirations for September. We begin with the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. We have three people, Cassandra Adams, William Burgess, and Tamara Coin Beasley. They all have three-year terms, and this is referred to the Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee. On their term expires September 1, 2021. Next, we have Public Athletic Cultural and Entertainment Facilities Board. We have one person, Ronnie Rice, whose term expires September 15. It's a six-year term, and it's also referred to the Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee. Next, we have the Justice and County Department of Human Services, Jeffrey McGee. The term expires September 17. It's a six-year term, and it's referred to the Education Committee. And lastly, we have the Zoning Board of Adjustment. It's the resignation of Jared Fulton. He was a registered architect, and that will be referred to-- that appointment will be referred to the Planning and Zoning Committee. And that completes our--
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to consideration of the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay, yes, sir. Because consent agenda begins on page two with item number one. Please note that this item is submitted and recommended by the-- like, by Counselor Hoyt, who's chairman of the Transportation Committee. Also on number-- page two is item number three. Page three, items four, five, and six. On page four, items seven and eight. On page five, items 11 and 12. On page 13-- I'm sorry, on page six, item 13. And please note that this is recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, not the Utilities and Technology Committee. Also, we have items 14 and 15. On page seven, we have items 16, 17, and 18. And there's just a correction on wording on pa-- on item number 16. It's the fourth line from the bottom. It begins with installments. It says-- it should say "subject to an appropriation by the city in each corresponding fiscal year" instead of the word "appropriate." "Appropriate." All right, on page eight, we have items 19, 20, and 21. Item 20 was amended. It should say an amount not to exceed $7,470. $4,970 is in support of Carver High School to assist with expenses associated with the basketball shooting machine, and $2,500 is for Huffman Middle School to assist with professional development. The $4,970 is coming from District Nine discretionary funds, and the $2,500 is coming from the District One discretionary funds. Then we also add item number 21 on the consent agenda. On page nine, we have items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26. On page 10, we have items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31. Page 11, we have items 32, 33, 34, and 35. Page 12, items 36, 37, 38, and 39. Page-- and that completes our consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Move start, Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I would like to remove item 12 on page five, item 18 on page seven, and item 19 on page eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Everybody get that 12, 18, 19? Okay. Counselor Smithman will kind of go. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, Mr. President, if you could remove item 21.
Okay. Is that off? Okay. Counselor Quinn, and then Will. Okay. Counselor Woods, Counselor Hilliard.
Counselor Williams.
We have our board on page 13.
Everybody good with that? Okay, all right. President Protem?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless the council member, the mayor, or citizen in question in a public hearing's a request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced, so--
Hold on a second.
I have a question. On item 40 that we suggested putting on consent, normally setting public hearings, we announce them, and if we put it on consent, no one will hear us.
Oh, excuse me. Also, the council needs to set the hearing date. There's no date listed, so you'll have to determine the date of the public hearing.
That's fine.
Okay, all right, we'll take-- keep it off. And we will work on that when item comes up. Okay, all right. Okay, all right, minus 40 minute consent. Are we ready? Need a motion?
Hold on.
Second.
All right, the vote has started. Counselor Hoyt?
Vote aye. Madam Clerk?
And Counselor--
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, all right, the consent agenda is approved. First item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the first item is item number two on page two. An ordinance to amend Title II General Government, Chapter Five, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article in Arlington Annabellum Home and Gardens Board, Section 2-5-213, Membership Appointment. Term of Office in Section 2-5-214 Bylaws, Meetings, Quorum of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to further provide for the membership and meetings of the board. This is the second reading. It did not receive unanimous consent last week and was held over to this week.
Okay.
So we need a motion.
Hold on a second.
Okay, items before us. Good morning, Chief Sparks.
Good morning. Are there questions from the council?
Yes, ma'am, and Madam City Attorney's Attorney Bernard comes to address them.
That's correct, Attorney Bernard is here for any legal questions.
Okay, so, Ms. Appia, Attorney Bernard is here. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to ask, is the main thing that we're doing here is making the appointments by the city council rather than being a self-appointed board? Is that what we're primarily doing, or are we doing something else?
No, that's not. Attorney Bernard can answer. Julia Bernard, Office of City Attorney. No, ma'am, we're not changing the method of appointment, just the number of members. That's the only thing. There's no change in how they're appointed.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'm losing my mind. I must be. So why are we changing the number? They can't get people to participate, or?
There have been issues, and I believe Chef Matt Murphy is here to back up. Director Toby Richards was not able to be here today. But I have been attending meetings, and they have a good deal of issues with trying to get a quorum. So this adjusts the number of regular board members down, and also makes the ex officio members, which include members from the council, the mayor, and the finance director, and reduces the number of members from the Historical Association. But those ex officio members will no longer count to the quorum. They will still be allowed to vote if they're there, but they don't count us to the quorum, which helps improve getting quorum.
They don't count-- they don't count towards the quorum, but that helps get a quorum.
Right. The number of regular members is reduced to five, from eight to five. And the amount set for having a quorum, instead of, I believe, it's something like nine members now, that includes ex officio members, you'll only need three regular members to be there out of the five regular members. But there are still ex officio members from the city and from the Arlington Historical Association who will still have seats, not count towards the quorum, but be able to vote.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Okay. Are there any other questions before? Okay, all right, Madam Clerk?
Okay, the vote has started.
Vote yes for me.
Okay.
Okay, all right. That item is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item will be item number nine. It's on page four. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement between the City of Birmingham and First Light, Inc., under which First Light will undertake a project at real property located at 2230 Fourth Avenue, North Birmingham, which is the site of the Granada Building, to renovate the Granada Building and to increase its square footage and programming in order to serve the increasing single homeless population. The city will transfer Title II and make the property available for redevelopment at a use value of $1 in support of the project. This is the first reading, so you'll need unanimous consent to bring the item up today.
Move for unanimous consent?
Okay, let me hit that up here right quick. Okay, the vote has started on unanimous consent. Counselor, okay. Okay, now we need a motion.
Move the item?
Second.
All right, questions?
Yes, I just want to thank the mayor's office for getting this straight. This has been an ongoing situation now for several years, and just I'm happy that we can finally get it clarified and actually codified and allow First Light to continue to serve the
All right, any other questions?
Okay, the vote has started. Counselor Hoyt?
Okay, all right, great. That item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item is on page five. It's item number 10. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement between the City of Birmingham and the Jones Group LLC, under which the Jones Group will undertake a project at real property located at 1445 Hibernian Street, Birmingham, which is the site of the former Scott Elementary School, to remodel the property and surrounding grounds to use as its company headquarters, converting the property into a useful and attractive commercial office space. The city will transfer Title II and make the property available for redevelopment at a use value of $30,000 in support of the project. This is the first reading, so again, we need unanimous consent to take it up to date.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Okay, the vote has started for unanimous consent. Counsel-- oh, we have one no vote.
Hold on. Counselor Hoyt, would you let it come up for a discussion? I just think it's--
Yeah, I don't know anything about--
Okay, could you allow it just to come up for a presentation? I think you'll be pleased. I know I've heard the presentation in budget and finance and economic development. I think the Jones Group, I think it would be, if you allow it for presentation.
Please, sir. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we doing stuff of this magnitude, you need to be a discussion of this, counsel.
I understand. If you allow us an opportunity to have that discussion, I think the developers are here in the audience, and I think you, I think you'll find it worthwhile.
So we have one up, didn't you?
I hadn't called. I hadn't. I mean, okay, so are we able to-- are we able to--
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So now I need the motion on the item.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all righty, now we're ready for Chief, if you could have a presentation.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have the representatives from the Jones Group. We also have Ms. Janice Doster from our IO department. They're ready.
Good morning, councilors.
Good morning.
Good morning, my dear.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so tall, right. Okay, we have the Jones Group. They're a minority contracting firm that specializes in construction, underground utility, and security. They are here with us. Mr. Tony Jones can give you a little bit more detail on their company and what -- how they plan to redo the former Scott School as their headquarters facility.
Thank you. I'm Anthony Jones. I'm the president of Jones Group. We are an 11-year-old company. I'm from Birmingham. I'm from Manzley Pratt City area. And we are in need of a headquarters for our company. We've grown over the last 11 years to a point that we are looking for a headquarters. Scott School is kind of dear to us. It's in the neighborhood I grew up in. We plan to go into Scott School, and we have a due diligence period that we go through and see exactly what it's going to cost to renovate Scott School. We plan to do that and make that our headquarters.
Yeah, well, have you established a timeline and when's that going to be done? Because I can tell you that we-- what has happened in the past, we've given-- had these kind arrangements, and then it doesn't get, you know, it doesn't get done in a timely manner.
In our agreement with the city, we have a due diligence period of 180 days and then 18 months to complete the project.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First, I want to thank my colleague, Stephen Hoyt, for allowing this even to come up. I really appreciate that. It means a lot to me. Scott School, and I think, has been empty for probably the last 20 years. It has gone into extremely bad decay. It's just absolutely horrible. They've stolen the air conditioning, stolen all the wire and the plumbing. It's really an eyesore to District Nine. Plus, you know, I always scream about, you know, minority and black participation. You are a black company and a black business. And I appreciate the fact that you're even considering coming home to be a role model and uplift the community. I've talked and spoken to all of my neighborhood leaders in that area. They're excited about having something come back to that area that would add positivity to it. I would hope that this is just the beginning of having more black entrepreneurs come back to the area. That's something we talk about. We don't see many people that look like you in the position that you're in. That's very-- it shouldn't be to a place where it's not coming, but it's true. You know, you're one of the very few people that we have on a statue and level to compete globally for business and introduce our community to the future of what you're doing. So I want to thank you for thinking about coming home. I hope that your due diligence goes well. I would love to see you there. I know what it would mean to the community and what you can bring back. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jones, I just wanted to, on an unrelated note, Mr. Jones is doing some work in my district in Southeast Lake, and he spent a good part of his afternoon walking around the district to show what was going to be-- what was being done and to make sure that it was, after the utility work was done, that it was going to be done properly. You know, you don't find a lot of business owners that are willing to actually walk the street. I think it was a heat index of probably 190 degrees that day. And so afterwards, he and I recovered in sweat. But, you know, he actually took the time to walk the streets in my district to make sure that the work was going to be done right. And that meant-- it meant the world to me whether the public sees it or not. I really want to thank you for your time last week.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let me go to Counselor Abbott, since she hasn't spoken aside, then I'll come back to you.
I just wanted to ask, what is the zoning on this property currently?
I'm sorry, what is the-- what?
The zoning on this properly-- property currently?
The zoning has to be re-evaluated. We have to get it rezoned. And that's part of the due diligence period, to get that accomplished. And we-- that's one of the first steps that we want to do after this meeting and provided we are fortunate enough to be approved.
But what is the zoning right now? Do you know?
Residential.
It's--
It's residential, I believe.
It's on residential. Most of all the schools are zoned residential.
Okay, so, but we'll get a second bite at the apple to talk about screening your equipment that you'll be parking there and everything, so.
Right, yes, we will. But it's all to the rear. You can't see it from the street.
Well, good.
Yes.
Yeah, so Scott Schools--
Throw it on the table.
Scott School hasn't been closed quite 20 years because I went there for a career fair. So I know that it was open because I was on the council, so. But it might be close to 20. So thank you very much for what you're doing, because we need more of our schools repurposed, the ones that are closed, and to revitalize the neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rainier did give you a thumbs up. My neighbor.
Oh, yeah, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, well, we've been struggling as a council, trying to determine how we use this American recovery plan dollars. And it seems to me, Mr. Patron, Counselor of District Nine, that this would be an excellent opportunity.
Yes.
Because if that building is in that disrepair, then why aren't we offering some incentive to this man to rebuild this property?
Mr. President, Mr.-- you know, well, I think you're absolutely right. I agree 100%. And I would love to explore that more, and that's what it's for. Yes, sir. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, you know, this is a good use for this money.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Well, this is our-- this is our turn.
You know, and it's an opportunity. And I didn't know, was Jones black or white? I wasn't concerned about that. I was concerned, in fact, I hadn't been informed. And I didn't know anything about it, so.
That won't happen again.
And maybe he knows some folk up here. I don't, you know. But I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
But I think if we're gonna get this money and we need to spend it and spend it on something that is meaningful and impactful, then why aren't we offering some incentive to you, sir?
That's right.
You know, it's one thing to bring us to the table, but we want the same stuff the other folk get.
Yes, right.
Yes, sir. And Counselor, this is all, I think this is part of the due diligence, part of this whole 180-day due diligence period. So I think this is just the beginning of an ongoing conversation that needs to be had, but this is the initial step, and then it can go from there. So, Counselor Woods, you-- hold on. Counselor Hoyt, are you-- I was gonna-- you finished? Want me to come back to you?
I support it, but I want us to offer this man some incentive.
Yes, sir, but we just need to get to the-- we need to get to that point.
We ain't got no idea how we're gonna spend the money.
Well, I think we've got to, one, go in and assess it. I think that's why you have this 180-day--
That's good.
--grace period for your due diligence. And I think at that point, I'm not speaking for the administration, there'll be communication, I imagine, from the administration and with the Jones Group on, once they complete the assessment, then how do you move forward?
That's right.
Yes, sir. So, so I think at that point, Counselor Hoyt, you would then, if anything, I think the administration then would communicate that.
Get folks incentive all the time to go downtown.
Yes, sir.
And they don't even ask for it. We just give it to them.
Yes, sir. Well, I think we're in the right direction on this one. Yes, sir. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Didn't want to thank you for having an interest in the area. A lot of these vacant schools are embedded in neighborhoods, and there's not a ton of uses for them in a lot of situations. So definitely appreciate the interest and willingness to take on that challenge and that cost.
Thank you.
Did want to ask the administration if we can get a copy of that agreement. And it's not in the package, though.
It might be in a hard copy. It might not be-- I don't know, it might not have been electronic, but I think there's a hard copy, but we'll make sure. Yeah.
That's the whole agreement?
Okay, all right. We'll make sure there's a hard copy. Counselor Woods?
Okay, well, yeah, he was mentioning some things about the timetable and due diligence period and things like that. So I was trying-- period and things like that, so I was trying to get ahold of that actual agreement, but at the appropriate time. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, you'll share that with everybody, okay? You, you good? Okay, everybody else good? Council Horton, you good? Okay, all righty. All right, we're ready for vote then. Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Okay, the voting has started.
I don't get it, it didn't come up on my machine.
Okay.
Well, you know how you gotta vote.
Okay.
All right.
All right, okay, that item passes. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. All righty, next item, Madam Clerk, please.
The next item is item number 12 on page five. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a third amendment to master contract for public safety services surveillance equipment governmental with Alabama Power Company to provide that APC will install and maintain 62 HD fixed dome cameras with 30-day storage and associated equipment, one HD pan tilt zoom camera and all associated networking equipment, outdoors power connection, broadband connection, and three Genetek Securities Center video management system servers and associated subscriptions and fees for use by the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service Department at an estimated monthly cost of $8,394.50 for a term of 60 months.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay. Good morning, okay.
Mr. President.
Okay, I was gonna ask Chief Bart.
I just want the explanation.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was doing there. Horton.
Mr. President, Council Abbott, what we're doing here, the council voted on this agreement probably around two years ago when we had the implementation of a pilot security camera program that we, in conjunction with the Alabama Power Company. So with this agreement, that's before the council, we're trying to procure an expansion of some cameras for our BPD, not BPD, Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service for their precincts, not precincts, spaces, fire stations.
Yeah, fire stations.
Thank you.
Spaces.
Spaces, yes.
Okay, okay, so we're putting cameras on the fire stations for what purpose? So they can see fires?
No.
Council Abbott, we would probably need to go into executive session to discuss the security matter.
Council Abbott, if you're requesting locations, we need to go into executive session.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I want to know why. I don't want to know the locations. I mean, they've already said fire stations, but what is the, I mean, if it had been for the police department, I would have understood. I don't understand, and is it just for security, like ADT?
The short answer is just for security measures, for surveillance at the fire stations. As you know, they're open 24/7, so sometimes when they leave, there's no one in the building.
Okay, I've got you now. That's all I wanted. And normally, we have security companies do our security on our buildings, so why Alabama Power?
Because we were already in a master lease agreement with them that the council approved two years ago. So we're just amending that master lease agreement instead of doing a whole new agreement.
Okay, so does that mean that we could use them for all of our buildings?
It's a possibility.
If we felt like it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Chairman. Okay, here we go. Council Horton, we can go to you.
Yeah, I, having fraternity brothers who've been firemen's, I know that sometime their cars get broken, broken into, their personal cars. And I know that at least on First Avenue North, that fire station right there by Fender Court, I remember when he was stationed there, cars had been broken into several different times. And so I think it's a good idea to go ahead with the cameras.
Okay. All righty, any other questions? You good, Council Williams? Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, we're ready.
The vote has started.
Okay. All righty, that item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item is on page seven, item 18. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with JCCO under which JCCO shall provide professional services assisting the city with the management and supervision of the summer jobs and employment program for Birmingham youths ages 14 through 21 for a term of three years, and each year the city shall pay JCCO an amount not to exceed $210,000 subject to an annual appropriation in the city's corresponding fiscal year budget.
Move the item.
Second. Okay.
Any questions from the council?
Okay, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, my question was, this is a three-year agreement, and I haven't seen any youth this summer. Where are they? Are they working this summer or are they not working because of the pandemic?
Council Abbott, they're doing, they are working. It's a combination of both virtual and in person. So for safety reasons, the Division of Youth Services put a virtual experience together for a majority of the young people, but we do still have some that are at our park and recreation sites and at a couple of other city facilities, but we reduced the numbers because of the impact of COVID. But we still wanted them to have an immersive experience, so they are working both virtually and in person.
Okay, so what are they working on? Are they working projects for different departments? Or what are they accomplishing on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham?
So, yes, so for the employees that are working virtually, it's a part of the department's virtual platforms that the young people are doing, both support work for the young people who are involved in camps, at least for the younger ones, but for the ones that are in person, they're doing the same things that the staff onsite are doing. We just reduce the numbers. So Galen Phillips is on his way over if you need detail about the exact jobs, but they are, they're doing the same things that they normally would, they're just doing a combination of virtual and in person. It's just a reduced number.
Okay, well, if you, if y'all could just send us a list of, of the jobs that are being done, I don't even have to know the young people's names, but what positions are they filling in which departments? I know they're not filling a position, but what kind of activities are they working on? Is it stuff that staff doesn't have time to get to and wishes they could do, or what, who are they working for?
So we'll do both. It's a combination of, we try not to just relegate the young people to flunky stuff. We want them to have an immersive experience, but we'll do a breakdown of the positions that they have within the departments internally and externally. We'll provide those for you.
Okay, good. Because I can imagine it's very hard to be immersive during a pandemic. I'm having, having difficulty immersing myself too, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right, Council Horton, we go to you and then anybody?
Yeah, I just wish we had known that they, you know, widespread that this was, was going on, because I didn't think it was, it was happening because of the pandemic. And to know that we, how many young people do we have hired?
They'll provide the exact number, Council, but we did two, we did several different notifications for the council and the citizens, and it was advertised via Fox 6. Fox 6 is the media department.
Okay.
So it was, it was pretty well advertised.
Okay, all right. I just missed it, that's all.
Okay, other questions from anybody? Okay, all righty, Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Okay, the vote has started.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item is on page eight, item 19. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a limited release of repurchase rights and right of first refusal under which the city will release its right to repurchase and right of first refusal with respect to approximately 9.554 acres of property located in the Daniel Payne Industrial Park, which repurchase rights were included in a statutory warrant to deed dated May 21, 2001 from the city to W.W. Williams Company, a predecessor in interest to the current owner, Grady Co. LLC, in order to accommodate the sale of the property by Grady Co. LLC to Scanle Properties LLC, which will develop a building having a minimum of 30,000 square feet on the property. The release will apply to this conveyance only, only, and the city's repurchase rights will continue until Scanle Properties commences and completes construction of the building on the property. I need a motion. I'm sorry, I missed the motion.
This is Council Williams, Council Hillier. Okay. Council Abbott, you can take up, yes, ma'am?
It was me again. Yes, I wanted to ask, the, the limited release of repurchase rights and the right of first refusal, is this, did the city do this to ensure that something would actually be built on the property and that we wouldn't just be selling it to someone to sit on? And then as soon as they build a building on it, we release the, I mean, we no longer have the repurchase rights? Is that, once they develop it?
I'll have Attorney Jim Stanley speak to the matter. He should be on his way down.
Wow.
He was running down. He saw you was asking the question, he ran down. So you need a moment?
No.
Okay, okay.
Good morning, Council, Council Abbott, you are correct. The city includes those requirements in covenants in the deed in order to sure, ensure that there is a development done. We don't want to sell the property to somebody who turns around a year later and flips it for a huge profit when they don't develop it. So if they undertake the development they commit to, then we can release the covenants. There's a pending sale of the property. For title purposes, it won't go through unless we give them a one-time release of that right to repurchase. The buyer is committed to developing the property. They're ready to go, but if they don't, we still have the same rights going forward.
Okay, that, that's what I thought I read, but I wanted to confirm with people who actually knew.
You're correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have any discussion? Can you call for the vote?
Okay, the vote has started.
I'm voting yes.
That vote should be.
That vote passes. Next item.
Okay, the next item is item number 21 on page eight. A resolution determining that the Morehouse Tuskegee football classic event to be held on Saturday, October 9, 2021, at Legion Field, 400 Graymont Avenue West, 35204, serves a public purpose that promotes goodwill and services, services of public and serves a public interest, and authorizing and empowering the mayor to expend funds to pay for goods and services for this event related to city costs in an amount not to exceed $300,000 in accordance with Section 3-1-7 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. And I need a motion.
Move the item.
Second. Are there questions, Council Horton? I think they're just lowering the amount, though, I think, but, Council Horton.
Yeah, well, I'm still having pains about this, this item, because Miles College is in this community, and they have, they are a champions. They've been champions for the last two or three years. It's on, yeah. I guess I should have used my preaching voice. But anyway, and I just, you know, and I know it's gonna pass, but I don't understand how you slight folk in this community. And Miles has a winning team, and we've not ever offered them $300,000 or, or set this up for them. And, as a matter of fact, they have a bigger crowd than, than Morehouse. And, you know, I got family member Morehouse folk, so it ain't just about the man being a Morehouse man. But I just, I, you know, I'm just, we've never done this for Miles College, they right here.
Okay, um, me, okay.
I want you to know, the alumni is very upset about it. And I've gotten calls from the administration as well.
Okay, um, are there other questions on this particular matter? A response or anything from administration? All right.
Well, I haven't had a winning season in 10 years.
Okay. Council Horton, I get it.
I'm gonna speak my piece, but you're not.
I, I understand, I understand. And I was just giving everyone else an opportunity. Do you want a second time to speak, or are you ready to move on this one and then work, work on something for Miles outside of this?
Mr. President, we've had at least seven or eight months to work on something for Miles, and if we were intended to do anything by Miles, then we've done it by now, since they've announced that this is what we were gonna do. I'm just saying, the school is here. It's winning, they got a winning football team, baseball team, women's basketball team, and a men's basketball team, and three of those are champ, and the golf. They're champions.
Okay, um, here's what I want to do, Council. Let's, this item is before us. If you and I can talk offline today about, about Miles and their homecoming, I would love to have that conversation with you. Then I think if, we'll treat this item as one, but, but see if we can have a separate item or conversation for Miles. Is there something we possibly could work on and either, and also look at providing some funding?
I would, I would, I would accept that, Mr. President. I just want us to do right.
Yes, sir.
By those who are here.
Yes, sir.
And, and Miles, don't get me a dime. I am an alumni, and I support it.
Yes, sir.
Both financially and physically and all of that. I traveled a whole season last year, all up in North Carolina in the cold. Just Horton and I both were there. And so it just seems to me, Miles has done a lot in this city, in this region, and we should have been had first dibby than inviting a losing team.
Okay, Council, let's, okay, Council, let's keep it. I know we all, well, listen, I, listen.
You can look it up.
I, I understand, but listen, I, we've all loved HBCUs, you know, I attended a Tyler Diggitt that didn't have, you know, we didn't have football, but we also, our teams didn't were not, didn't win sometimes, but I think with all of us, it's, it's the spirit of the game and it's, it's being out there on the field. So, you know, sometimes you, you don't win, but you win as an individual and understanding character and team building. So, you know, that's just all part of the college experience.
And that's why I think Miles should have been here.
I, I understand, and we're gonna, and it
Same reason.
I, I understand, but you and I are gonna have a conversation shortly about what I think the Miles homecoming could look like. Okay, all righty. We're ready to vote, Madam Clerk. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Council, yes, ma'am, Council.
You may have answered. Has Park and Rec talked about bringing any games back from Miles to Legion Field, like Labor Day Classic?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This year, well, for, for example, for Labor Day Classic, they'll be playing at Alabama State, I think, for the next two years. Miles will be playing in Montgomery Labor Day weekend. The park board has been engaged in some conversations, from my understanding, with, with, with Miles College, looking at potentially some other games, maybe not Labor Day, but some other games. So there's been some ongoing conversations, yes, ma'am. But nothing official yet, but, but just to kind of piggyback off of what Counselor Hought was saying, there has been some conversations on, on how can, can we make sure that we're supportive of Miles Homecoming, October ninth, as we're doing with the Morehouse Tuskegee game. And I think there's an opportunity to, you know, embrace UAB plus Miles Tuskegee, you know, Miles is, Miles is Homecoming and the Tuskegee Morehouse game. So I think we'll have three games that weekend in Birmingham, Birmingham area, and I think there's a way that we can obviously support each individual game. And so the, the focus now will be working on Miles College and the commitment to the homecoming activities and, and the game at Miles College. So I think I have some ideas, and I'll just kind of, I'll share them with Counsel. We'll talk to Counsel Hought first, and then we'll kind of work from there backwards, but I think there's a commitment to make sure that we, we support, you know, all of them, because you're talking about a hundred thousand people being in, in the city of Birmingham area during that weekend, which is gonna have a great economic benefit to our city. So all of it, you know, it, it goes to everyone as part of us opening up the city, so.
I don't have anything against the game.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, you know, just any way we can help you and just talk into Miles, just keep us updated, because we do need to support HBCUs.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's no shade or anything towards UAB, but we have to support our black schools. You know, a lot of us know that on here, you know, HBCUs are kind of dying now, and we have to prevent that, and we have to support Miles. Tuskegee, Morehouse, or whatever, and we can help the mayor's office as well. So I just want to say that you have my support in whatever you need to do to help bring more football games to Legion Field.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll be, so Counsel Hought, we'll have that conversation on, on our, on our, our commitment to Miles Homecoming game. So, okay. With that, Madam Clark.
The vote is started.
Okay.
That vote should be up.
All right, that, that will pass, the next item.
All right, the next item will be item number forty. All right, that is, I'm sorry, hold on one second. All right, that item is a resolution setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance granting a renewal of a cable franchise to Spectrum Southeast LLC as an existing franchise pursuant to section twelve dash three point nine dash thirty-five of the general code of the City of Birmingham and section six twenty-six H of the Cable Communications Act of nineteen eighty-four for a period not to exceed five years. We need a motion on this.
I move approval.
Oh, we need a date, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, as utilities chair, I'd like to suggest, Counsel, that we consider setting this public hearing in two weeks to allow for the appropriate publications and notifications to the public that the hearing will be set, and that would be two weeks from today.
Okay. And that, that specific date will be the, the third, no, let me double check my calendar.
Yes, at least two weeks from the city attorney. Is that enough time?
That is. Seventeenth of August.
That will be the seventeenth of August.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I missed the motion and second for that item.
I'll make it.
And I'll second it.
All right. Okay, the vote is started. Counsel Abbott and Counsel Parker.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next item is item number forty-one. A resolution setting a public hearing August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty twenty zero 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 thirty-six, to change zone district boundaries from O N I Office and Institutional District to Q C two qualified general commercial district in order to construct new multifamily apartment units filed by Robert A. McCain, representing the owner HCP Mid-City LLC for the property located at eleven-ten Beacon Parkway East and situated in the southeast quarter of section eleven, township eighteen South Range Three West Birmingham. And I need a motion. Okay. And the vote is started.
All right, the vote is up.
Okay, that item passed. Okay, next item.
The next item is item forty-two, also on page thirteen. A resolution setting a public hearing August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 one, to change zone district boundaries from M X D Plan Mixed Use District to Q D five Qualified Multiple Dwelling District in order to construct a new multifamily development along Lake Shore Parkway filed by Andrew Phillips, representing the owner, the UAB Research Foundation for the property located at twenty-eight hundred Milan Court and situated in the northeast quarter of section thirty-one, township eighteen South, Range Three West Birmingham.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. All right, the vote is started. All right, the vote is up.
Okay, all right, that item passed. One second. Is that all?
That's all.
All right, what is, spin the rules for our speakers. I think the only speaker we have is Counsel Hought.
Yeah.
Oh, he made a motion, spin the rules for our speakers.
Yeah, they left.
They left?
But we were gonna do it right after.
Okay, my bad, I'm sorry, I did. Can you just talk to it then?
Well, let me see if they're here.
Can you give them a few minutes? We can do our announcement and kind of let you kind of have extended time. Is that possible?
I mean, I don't know where they are.
Okay, all righty. That was the only speakers that I was aware of. Is that right? Mr. McDaniels, where, that was it? Okay, all righty, now we go to old and new business. We're gonna allow Counsel Hought to be last, to be able to give him time to give our, his, his presentation here. So Counsel Woods, if you'll start.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. Number one, Bridlehood Neighborhood Association will meet today virtually at six P. M. Spring Lake will meet on Thursday, August fifth, also virtual at six-thirty P. M. And Echo Highlands will also meet on Thursday, August fifth, virtually this week. Also, really want to give a shout out to Birmingham Park and Rec and all the partners that kind of came in to make the Magic City Showcase a success. Really had a really good event, about two hundred and fifty athletes from, mainly from the local area, but really all over the state came and competed and, and had opportunities to really showcase their skills. There's at least four scholarship offers that I'm aware of that kind of came following that event, but just really was really impressed with the, the work in hosting that event that Park and Rec did at Legion Field, and was really excited with the turnout and, and the overall event. So wanted to, to thank them and also shout out Counsel Hillyard. He told me, I guess he told all of us about a guy, maybe last year, Martez Knalls with Bold as a Lion Studios and showed his work and showcased him, but he, he was a videographer for the, for the event on Saturday, and he, he does an incredible job, and some of the things he was doing to get some shots was amazing. So definitely wanted to appreciate you for sharing, shit, a lot of, a lot of times when somebody finds something good, they don't share it, but I appreciate you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and, and Counsel Woods, I want to tell you, I think it was a great event. We've had some additional conversations, and, and we have more to do. So I'll be talking with you shortly. We have a couple of more, I think, projects that, you know, anytime we can provide opportunities for scholarships for, for our young men and women, you know, we definitely need to do that, so I appreciate that. And next year's gonna be bigger and better. Yes, sir. Counsel Hillyard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Woodson, I got my eyes on you. I gotta watch you, because you are making moves, and I really appreciate what you're doing and reaching out to the younger people in the community and really working with them. A lot of great things gonna come out of that. Tonight at seven-thirty P. M., we will have our weekly virtual town hall meeting. We would love for you to join. The call-in number is five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine. Please join us tonight at five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine. We would love to have you in on that. Faith Chapel in Wollum is having a blood drive Monday, August the tenth, from eleven A. M. to four o'clock P. M. Once again, Faith Chapel is having a blood drive Monday, August the tenth, from eleven until four P. M. The address is one hundred Mike Moore Boulevard, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two two four. Wollum is having a virtual town hall meeting tonight at six o'clock P. M. Wollum Neighborhood is having a virtual town hall meeting tonight at six o'clock P. M. The call-in number is one seven two zero seven four zero ninety-eight sixty-three. Access code is sixty-five eighty-nine thirty-eight zero. Please join in with the Wollum Neighborhood meeting. Westchester Neighborhood Meeting is tonight, starting at six o'clock P. M. at the Gaines Chapel Church. Westchester Neighborhood will be meeting tonight at six o'clock P. M. at Gainesville Chapel Church. The East, the Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight, also starting at six-thirty P. M. at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church in Thomas. Wednesday, August the fourth, the Sipco Finley Neighborhood Meeting will meet at five-thirty P. M. at First Baptist Church Sipco. Saturday, Sherman Heights is having a Stop the Violence Party event, starting at twelve o'clock noon at the Sherman Heights Park. We look forward to having you come out and, and join us out there for that in Sherman Heights. Monday, August the ninth, the Tuxedo Neighborhood will meet and will start, will start their meeting at five o'clock, virtual neighborhood meeting. If you would like to attend, please call in. And, oh, the call-in number is, is one two two five three zero six eighty-seven sixty-nine. Access code fifty thirty-seven eighteen seventy-six two. Please join us. Also, Monday night, August the ninth, the North Birmingham Neighborhood will meet at six, at six-thirty P. M. at the North Birmingham Library. Thank you, Mr. President, in its district nine time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hillyard. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Protem. Overton Neighborhood will be meeting tonight at six o'clock, Overton Park. Roebuck Neighborhood will be meeting at six-thirty at Don Hawkins this upcoming Monday, August the ninth, and that is all we have.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Protem. On tomorrow, from ten A. M. to four P. M., the YWCA Downtown will be having a vaccine fair. This will be administration of the Pfizer vaccine, so the first shot will, would be tomorrow, and the second shot would be on August twenty-fifth. YWCA is located at three oh nine Twenty-third Street North. Again, that's a vaccine fair tomorrow morning, starting at ten A. M. and running till four P. M. We have two neighborhood meetings tonight. Eastlake at six P. M. at Household of Faith, and Forest Park South Avondale at six-thirty P. M. at Almondale Elementary. And for the residents of Central City, I've helped organize a meeting between residents and the micro-mobility vendors, and that will be happening Thursday at six P. M. at the Wine Loft. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President Protem. We have the next budget and finance meeting on August ninth at three-thirty. Submissions are due on August fourth, which is tomorrow, by twelve P. M. There are no exceptions, so we hope that everyone will get all of their information in, in a complete and correct manner. The neighborhood meeting for tonight is at six-thirty, Forest Park, South Avondale. We'll be meeting at the Avondale Library. And I wanted to ask Chief Sparks and Mr. Mitchell, can we get a report on what is going on with code enforcement? Why we can't seem to get any? We really need to, you know, that is the biggest complaint we get. People say the city won't do a blankety-blank thing about all this mess in our neighborhoods, and, you know, I just don't have answers, but I need some.
Counsel Abbott, very timely request, and we've been tracking it. You've consistently raised this issue, and we have, we've done a deep dive, I think I shared this with you a few weeks ago, that the team was working on a pretty robust update for the council. So that team is going to be following up. It's our coordinated code enforcement team that talks about, it spans the gamut of everything code enforcement related, what the city's efforts are, what the gaps are that you all will be, you'll be hearing from that team. And so the mayor's gonna be following up with the council to coordinate a date to present that information to the entire council. So, yes, ma'am.
That'll be good, because the Glen Iris Neighborhood meeting was last night, and that was, you know, it, it's a hot topic. And as I drove in today, I saw a lot of why it's a hot topic, and it just reminded me that I needed to say something so that we can get something moving in that neighborhood, where for the past twenty years, we haven't been able to get code enforcement to do anything about violations that are on the books. They're part of the city code, but the city just refuses to do anything, and folks are frustrated.
We'll do the first coordination, Counselor, with, through the PIC Committee, but the team is, is now ready. So we'll, we'll plan that schedule so you all can get a very deep dive into where we are with code enforcement.
Okay, and another issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Street racing and whatever people are doing to these cars to make them extremely loud, the people that like to drive through your neighborhood at two A. M. roaring through like they've got no muffler whatsoever. I have a friend who actually has a car that has a switch, so you can make the car sound obnoxious, or you can make it sound like a normal car. That's a Mustang. So what are we doing about this problem? Because they're racing up and down the interstate, Greensprings Highway, downtown through UAB. I think they love to hear the reverberation of their noise on those big tall buildings. What are we doing about that? Because it is, it's disturbing people's sleep.
So the street racing issue has been one that's been tracked for quite some time, and there are several, there are several things that V P B is doing that the council would be pleased to know. So we'll coordinate again through Public Safety, so the council can be brought up to speed on that as well. But this, this has been an issue that they have been tracking for a while, so we'll coordinate that with you, Counselor, to have that presented via your committee.
Yeah, it's just getting so much worse. It's like they know that nobody's going to do anything, so they're, they seem to be, like, increasing in numbers. They come in, in pods, like there'll be eight or ten- pods, like there'll be eight or 10 of them, all roaring together. It's like a party atmosphere, but it's driving the people who need to sleep at night insane. So it just, yeah, we need to hear, we need to hear about it as a council, maybe at a committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Ms. Smitherman?
Oh, y'all are so entertaining. We have PIC meetings at 2:00 PM in the council chambers. Also, I want to say congratulations to our parents and students on a safe and successful return to school. When we gave out school supplies yesterday morning at Hemp Hill, it struck me that moms and dads and loved ones sacrificed so much until the end to give our children new shoes, fresh cuts, braids, and new clothes. And shout out to the parents and grandparents on the council as well, and shout out to the District 6 families. Girls Inc. of Central Alabama became one of the seven programs selected to launch a new national $10 million national dollar program in 2022. So congratulations to Girls Inc. The 16th Street Baptist Church is one of the 20 sites, part of the Alabama African American Civil Rights $3 million grant awards further that work. So congratulations to them. I had a good time partnering with Southside AME Back to School Supply Drive, stopped by and met the organizer and different constituents of the committee. We had a successful D6 cleanup event at Hemp Hill Memorial Park and Spring Haven Park. Thank you to volunteers from Salvation Army and Hands on Birmingham. Also, unfortunately, my neighbor died last week and we had a gravesite funeral home funeral service for Theo Thomas over two doors down on 16th Street Southwest. They were a great family and sympathy to his friends and family. And also, I want to say happy birthday to President Parker. It's on Saturday.
All right. So she didn't tell you the rest of the story now. So it's Counselor Smitherman's birthday too.
I had to say happy birthday first.
So but that's not till Saturday. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to have something this weekend. Yeah, we're still trying to figure it out. You're trying to get me first before I got you. Uh huh. So.
I always get you first.
All right. So anyway, yeah, she didn't fit. So anyway.
She's younger and quicker.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. That's why we have her here. That's right. Hey, she's on it, on that cutting edge. So anyway, so congratulations. Yeah, you got me before I got you. I was going to get you today.
And then lastly, my nephew isn't listening, but happy birthday to him. His birthday is on Monday. Thank you, President Parker.
Okay, thank you. President Protim, and then we'll come to you, Councilor, to close us out.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to wish, in keeping with the happy birthday theme, I was going to wish both of you a happy birthday. Our birthday twins here on the council, so birthday, happy birthday to you all. I also have a birthday greeting for Mrs. Mary Louise Jackson. She's a resident of the Paddle Lee Community. She is the young age of 89, but we just wanted to wish her a happy birthday. So if y'all would just help me in just congratulating her. We do have two neighborhood meetings today. We have the Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association. They will be meeting virtually. And we also have on Friday, the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association, and they will be meeting Friday at 4 o'clock virtually. I did want to ask Mr. Sparks, Chief Sparks, just a couple of updates, if we could. I have had numerous calls regarding the status of the Roosevelt Rec Center, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that publicly because there is some worry that that center is permanently closed. So I just wanted to ask if you had any update for our residents today.
So Deputy Chief Chad Mitchell, no, it's not permanently closed, but Deputy Chief will speak.
Thank you.
Madam Protim, we're working on this with our Calver Projects Division to make sure that we find a solution to find it to be in good standing so it can be reopened. Right now, it is temporarily closed just because of the issue, but we are working on a daily solution, try and find it so we can reopen that rec center. We're well aware.
Thank you very much. And I did just want to piggyback on what Mrs. Abbott said. I was in a neighborhood meeting yesterday with Grisilla Heights, and there is, and I think we all get this when we're in, speaking with our residents, there is just a heightened concern about the code enforcement and what we can do and to ensure that our residents and work with us in that. I have to share a story. I went home the other afternoon and there was a contractor out there doing some work. And so I passed by and I just happened to see him putting the trash in an area there next to the homeowner's house. And so I said, "Sir, you're not supposed to put that trash there. I will go home and get you a trash bag if you need it." And he said, first he wanted to argue and say he was within his rights to do that. And, but he did remove the trash. And so I, I'm glad that he took heed to the conversation. And so I just, another reminder that when we have contractors doing work for us, they shouldn't leave their trash for us to, you know, have to pick up. And so thank you then for that continued updating emphasis. And just one thing, during the neighborhood meeting, there was a big concern, the trash had been delayed on yesterday. So I don't know if we're having problems throughout other districts, but they had not, as of 7 o'clock, they had not picked up that trash.
So yes, ma'am, councilors. So there has been a challenge, and we've shared this publicly with the Department of Public Works in three areas. One, that COVID has really had a huge effect on the department. Two is the rain. And then there was a stint where there was a significant amount, where the temperatures were just extremely high, which also had an effect on the department. The department worked all weekend to get caught up. And what we've required of them is daily updates. So if there are areas that are missed, we can notify you all and the residents in real time. The anticipation is that the areas that were missed will all be resolved this week. And so what we want to do is arm you and the residents with info. We try to communicate with them daily to make sure that they know if there's an area that's missed, that one, we have visibility on it and that it will be addressed. So if you all see that, please communicate those to us. But the plan is for any missed area, because they were behind yesterday, but the plan is that they will be caught up this week on all of those areas. But if you see those, please continue to elevate them to us and we'll keep you updated in real time on the areas that are missed and when they plan to get to them.
And I think as councilors, we all are appreciative of the work that's done by Public Works to keep our neighborhoods clean and the pickup of the trash. So we appreciate that. And I just would like to ask if we know of those type delays, if we could maybe just send that messaging out. Because when I went there last night, I wasn't aware that it had been delayed because my trash hasn't picked up until Tuesday. So I didn't realize they had been within the district, those delays. And we understand that. The rains, the heat, just everything, the number of staff. But just wanted to, it would help, be helpful to my office if we would know about that and then we could relay that to our residents.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll share also that the department has really worked a significant amount of overtime. And so they work almost well into 10 or 11 o'clock on some nights. So that's sometimes the reason for the delay in your notification in the evening time because many will assume that they're stopping at 5 or 6, but they're not. To get caught up, they're working well into the evening time. So we'll try to notify you both in the evenings and in the morning of those delays, as well as notify your constituents. So we hear you. And I want to salute the department as well on the tremendous challenges. They're working extremely hard to make certain that they continue the service and we try to provide them with the support that they need so there are no gaps. So we'll make sure we continue to keep you informed.
Thank you. And again, we appreciate the work of that team. Thank you very much. And that's my, my statement. Thank you.
Mr. Pro.
Okay. Mr. Hilliard? Thank you, Mr. President. I too agree with both of you all. I was just looking at my bill the other day. Lawn, that grass is growing so fast, I'm almost paying the lawn man as much as I pay him bills. So I figured I'd get out a lawn mower and start cutting it myself. I wanted us to keep in mind, and we haven't had much mention, I know we know that COVID is out there, but this Delta virus is reaping habit on the South. I looked at a map on this morning of Alabama. It was totally red, totally red, and it scared me half to death. But we do, we have to be alert. And I don't know what's going, what it's going to take, but we may consider going back virtual, hopefully, if it continues to wave in that direction. So I wanted to put that out there to the president. The other thing is that on a national level, I want to, I don't want us to be asleep. We're truly in a unique situation where the clock is being turned back on African Americans when it comes to voting. It's, it's being done so silent that there, the laws that they're passing throughout the South, throughout the country, is getting to a point where it will put us back where we were in the 1800s, where it would almost be illegal to do anything in, in voting and scare us away from the polls. So I want us to be on alert. I want us to be vigilant, start thinking about it. I want you to start following it on the national level, on the local level. I want you to start getting involved in some of the activities that's going around the country because your rights are going to be stolen from you in plain daylight. And not enough of us are talking about it. So please be vigilant and realize that overnight, even though I know we have some great people around us, great diversity on our council, and I know that our council don't feel the same way that some of our national people do. I can't speak for everybody, but let me tell you this, we are headed back to slavery. And it's just that serious. And I don't think that many of us don't understand that we are under attack. So I want you to follow that and look at what's happening in Washington on the voters at the end. And Mr. President, I say thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council Hilliard, for mentioning that. I want to remind people that the last day to register to vote, to, to vote in the August 24th election is one week from today, August 9th. So please, if you need to do that, get that taken care of. Also, I would highly recommend that you check your polling location. I know in some places, the polling places have changed. So please check your voter registration status and your polling location. And you have one week to register in time to vote in the August 24th election.
All right. Councilor, you're going to wrap it up and you have a presentation and a couple of things. So.
Can we suspend the rules to hear from the speaker?
Yes, sir. It's just, yes, sir. Yeah. I mean, that's why I wanted you to be last so we could let you wrap it up. And then when you finish, we're going to ask Council Williams to make a motion. So take your, so it's on you.
Ms. Andrea Moon, would she come? She's with the Danin Project. Ms. Moon?
And you'll do your presentation. Councilor, all this is under your, your report. So you have the floor. Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Good morning.
My name's Keondrea Moon. I work with the Danin Project.
Stick it a little louder, Ms. Moon.
Oh, sorry. My name's Keondrea. I work with the Danin Project, specifically with the Work-Based Learning Program. It's a part of our youth programs. So basically, the program is designed to give our young men and women 18 to 24 some work experience. They're able to earn a certification, whether it be in landscaping, forklift, HVAC, electrical warehouse, CDL, as well as try to get some work experience in the certification that they choose. So this program is, along with our OSY program, which is our out of school, out of school youth program as well. And after they finish about six to eight weeks, they are eligible for permanent employment with one of our contractors, or we'll just try to help them receive permanent employment. So we just wanted to make everyone aware. Thank you, Councilman Horton, for just allowing me to speak on behalf of Willie, Willie Davis. And I have some flyers here, if I am able to leave them.
Okay. All right. Did you have some stu-, hold on. Did you have a couple of, Councilor, did you have?
Students with you.
I thought you, okay. All right. If they want to.
So I have one student. His name is Jawan Holmes.
Let him come up in and introduce himself.
Cool.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jawan Holmes.
Put the mic up to you, Jawan.
Yeah, my name is Jawan Holmes.
Okay.
And I'm getting my fourth little certification.
All right. Congratulations.
Because I have a question too. Thank you. Well, congratulations, Mr. Holmes, in getting that forklift training. And I just want to tell you, we have a company that's coming to District 7, and they're very concerned, they're very, they want to have people trained in that type of ability and skill. So I can talk to you later about where they might be. I know Danin helps to place trainees as well, but we do have Buffalo Rock, and they're looking for forklift drivers and the special skills in that. So congratulations. You're going to be ready. Thank you.
I was going to say also to Councilman Horton and to the young man from Danin Project and both of you all, Mr. Jones, the Jones Group that just left, that's the very type thing that they will be hiring for throughout the country and in training and that type. So that's relationship you want to cultivate for your students and your kids. And congratulations, young man. And I think you're going to do extremely well. Very proud of you.
Awesome. That's great.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you. And now Ms. Joyce Christian, she's the president of Enslie Highlands Neighborhood, and she wanted to share with you all a little, a little announcement this day.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Christian. My address is 1611 35th Street, Enslie. My telephone number is 205-503-6210. And I didn't know you was going to have Danin Project. I am a parent of a, of a child that's going in the project right now.
Okay. Awesome.
And I'm so happy that they offered transportation as well. And she's going for a CNA. I came to, first, this is my first year as president, and I just wanted to be vigilant and let y'all know that I want to be an active president so y'all will see me. Today is National Night Out, and it's a partnership between the, the police and the community. And today, the West Pre-Sink was giving a box with goodies and a little car with candy and balloons. And we are asking our neighbors to cut on blue lights to recognize and appreciate the police officers that work in our neighborhood. Also, our meeting is on May, no, Monday, August the 9th, and it will be a virtual call. Since I'm new, I'm not, I don't have a number, but I do have a link. If my neighbors would like to call me for that link, I can give it to them. Also, we are having a back to school rally at Enslie Park. That's 2800 Avenue K in Birmingham. And it will be on August the 14th from 1 to 4. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Christian, for what you do. Council Abbott, she has had probably five or six cleanups in the last year. I mean, that's just something she, she does. She does all the time. And, and she really needs to be commended because she has cleaned up some areas that, that really needed some attention, particularly on Warrior Road. And, and she's done that continuously, even before she was president. So I just, you know, we just appreciate when we got residents who take some ownership in terms of how we engage in our communities. And you've done that very well. And so I'm very proud that, that you're president. And now I won't get a chance to serve you. I will get a chance to serve you, but, but not in this capacity. But, but I appreciate the work you've done so far. Thank you very much.
And I want to say thank you to Councilman Horton. And I do have you a little box with treats in here.
Okay. All right.
And thank you for the job that you have done in representing our area. And we really appreciate you. And you have really encouraged me to stand in this position.
That's right. Well, you're doing a great job. We appreciate that. Thank you. The Five Points West District Forum, this is for District 8, is going to be Thursday, August 12th, and from 5 to 7 o'clock at the First United Cumberland Presbyterian Church. This is located 4616 Terrace R. This event is free and is open to the public. Peace, John, as we have a conversation with school board and council representatives for the election that's going to take place on August the 24th to serve District 8 communities. And everyone is invited. And this comes from Ms. Doris Sam, the president of the Five Points West Community, Mr. Johnny Ford, the vice president, and Ms. Loretta Waits, the secretary. These are the community offices. I wanted to share that with you all. And I think I mentioned to you last week, our District 8 Ninth Annual Education with a Perpofest Scholarship Program will conclude with a press conference that's going to be tomorrow, August the 4th, right outside here in Lynn Park at 5 o'clock. And all 32 students will be awarded anywhere from $1,000 to no less than $500. And so, and most of those students.
And so, and most of those students are Birmingham City School students, so we even got some from Huggins, from J.O., all our high schools, Ramsey, and had one young lady that made a 30. We had two of them that made 30 on ACT, and one of them is going to Yale.
Birmingham?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yes. And so, and so, we just, we ecstatic that these were all wonderful persons, and I wished I had the name of all the, I think Stephanie was one of our central staff, Stephanie was one of our evaluators, Mr. Wobbit King, we had Ms. Isola from Counselor Protem's office. And so, I want to thank them, because they really spent a lot of time, I think Sonya Smith also served as one of our evaluators. So, it's not an easy task to be going through and reading essays and making some decisions, but we wanted to really thank them for their time and effort, because it's a great undertaking. But tomorrow, if you want to join us, I won't have any food, but you can be there to, you know, to encourage our young people, because they're going on to college and going to do great things. And to this date, since nine years ago, we've given $102,000 to kind of college-bound students. So, I'm very pleased with that, and Anthony Marino has been our chair from the very beginning, and so, I want to thank Anthony Marino for working with us and securing these dollars for our young people. Thank you. Those were my announcements.
Great, Counselor. Will you? Listen to Jared.
Thought he had a second announcement.